I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order Thursday, May 9, 2019 at 7:30. I just want to step aside from the agenda and go off-topic to the Fuller Shores issue, which is the water that runs down Fuller Shores as a result of groundwater coming up onto the ground. Literally a spring that runs onto the road and runs down the road. So, we've been getting conversation back and forth. I've talked to Mr. Palucci and I've talked to, well, I've gotten emails from somebody with your, Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Lang. But I want to start this by telling you a little bit about private ways. Private Way is a road that was in effect before zoning came into effect, before rules and regulations of the planning board. It was more than likely a dirt road. I don't know, I wasn't around at that time. There's been some improvement on the roads over time. There has been some pavement put down. I believe when I first saw, and there are many of them as well in Lakeville, there's Priscilla, there's Nelson Shore, there's, what?
Pine Bluff.
Pine Bluff, yep, there's Pine Bluff, there's even the Hemlocks, private ways. They're all in various states of repair and disrepair. And they're, where they were roads before there was probably even a planning board, the planning board really didn't have any authority to say how they were supposed to be built, maintained, or anything like that. As a matter of fact, I believe most of them were just dirt paths that went down to shorefront cottages. I'm not a history major by any means. I am not, you know, I've heard a lot about how they were, how they came into effect, and what they are. And a private road is a road that was built not up to the town standards for the town to maintain, for the town to, to actually do any work on, pardon me?
To accept it.
To accept. They were too narrow, they have, you know, slopes off to the side that aren't really permissible for town rules and regulations of the planning board or zoning. So, the town never took the private roads. The town doesn't have control over the private roads. Most of the private roads have associations to take care of the private roads. And when, when we, we don't like to allow lots to be built on a private road because we don't have any control over the private road. So, we deemed it one of our rules, regulations, that any lot being built on a private road would have to be over a three-acre lot. People call that restrictive. People want to put three houses on three acres. But we're stuck to our guns and we want to maintain that we don't inundate the roads with vehicles and we don't inundate the roads with people going up and down. And it's the responsibility of the shorefront associations to maintain the road. And we also suggest when somebody comes in, they have a piece of property, they develop the property, they sell it to somebody, that the people that get into these new developments become part of the association. We're not trying to squeeze out the people in the association. We just want the people that are buying the new houses to realize that they have a financial and a monetary contribution to maintain what is there now because it's a private road and it's not a public road. The town has no responsibility with the road. I don't know when you folks purchased the property there, and it really doesn't matter. I don't know whether the people that sold you your properties told you that this is a private road and explained to you what a private road was. I can't be concerned with that because it's not the privy of the planning board to make sure that everyone that buys a house, we run down to the Registry of Deeds and say, "You know, you just bought a house on a private road." I can't do that. People have to take responsibility for their own actions, buying a house on a private road. The subdivision that went on the private road, we tried to keep it as minimal of an effect on the private road as possible. We heard rumors of a 40B subdivision going in there. We don't have control over 40B subdivisions. That's the state. The state does that. The state does that because they think that there should be, there should be, people should be able to afford houses everywhere. So, if somebody wanted to go in there and put 25 house lots, where there are now three, we would have no control over that. But when Mr. Palucci came in and said he's got a proposal to go with three house lots on what could have been a four-house lot subdivision, we kind of went along with it because we thought it was the best-case scenario, plus they're each on about four acres of land. That's, that's a nice thing, you know? So, we also had him design the road as best, with his best practices in mind. We went, I went up there and I took a bunch of pictures after we had our first meeting and there was a rainstorm and I went up there and I took the pictures of the property. The drainage on the road is not, is keeping the water from flowing onto Fuller Shores. There's a house lot to the right-hand side of Justine Way and the water's coming through over the, over the surface of the ground onto Fuller Shores. I do not believe that had anything to do with his subdivision. There's also a house lot on the left-hand side of Justine's Way. Pardon me? Okay. And that water is flowing out onto Fuller Shores. I don't believe Mr. Palucci had anything to do with that. What I'm saying is those are springs and where the spring comes out onto the surface of the ground, that has, that's been doing that for millenniums. And you can't hold somebody responsible for a spring that's not on his property. There's no way that he can do anything on that roadway that's going to stop that water from coming across that land. I'm just saying that that's the way it is, as an engineering fact. So, I know you folks would like to have somebody fix the road, you would like to have somebody fix the drainage. The town doesn't do that. The water was doing this to that road before this subdivision was built.
No.
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 Not like that.
Untrue.
I built the first house there. I was there since 1999 before that road was in there. I never had a water problem. I have a French drain in my system, in my house, the gravity French drain, never had a drop of water. The day that road was put in there next year.
Can you come up to the podium and talk?
My name is Joe Avenato. I live right at 162 Bedford Street. In that land, I have a French drain in my house that was built originally.
Yeah.
To grade.
Yeah.
Never had a water problem. As soon as that road went in, my cellar flooded out. I went down, two days before I was going on vacation, I went down to my basement to lock the bulk in, I saw six inches of water in my basement. Never had it for 10 years. Look at, look at the left corner, right, right to the right corner of Justine's Way. That is totally soaked and wet. That was never wet like that. So, you can't tell me that that's been going on forever. I never had any problems like that.
You have a pipe going under Justine's Way, don't you?
Yeah.
There's a pipe right here that goes under Justine's Way.
It's not enough. It's not enough. It goes both ways. When that water's running, it goes, it trickles. Look, that pipe, I don't even think the pipe is in the right location. It's, I don't think it's even big enough personally. It's only like a small little pipe and half of it's filled up with rock and gravel and everything else. It's not, go look there and see the piles that are just dumped on the corner. They never even spread them out, leveled it out. There's piles of just gravel sitting there. No one took any time to get up there and grade that off properly. And I don't even know if that would even help at this point. But that water never ran in my house like that in that corner, ever. Now I have, now I have to put a sump pump in my house.
Your way down on Bedford Street?
162. I'm right there at Justine's Way.
You're talking about it.
You said you were on the corner of Bedford Street.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Justine's Way and Fuller Shores.
Okay.
162 Fuller Shores.
You're on the right.
I'm sorry, 62.
These four.
You're on the right side, you're on the right side.
Yeah, 162 Bedford Street.
Do you see the water coming across your front yard?
It's flooded right now.
Nothing designed.
Go look at it right now.
I'm sure there's water coming out from the ground. It's a spring.
There is a pipe right here.
That's my property you're looking at.
Yep, this is the other, this is the west side.
Is all moss.
His property is on the corner.
Pardon me?
His property is on the corner.
Yeah, I know, I know. I, this is your front yard.
Yeah.
And I took pictures of this road and there's no water coming down the road.
There is.
So, there is. It's been going all, all winter. It runs all winter. It's still running.
That's over here.
I sunk in and trying to, I sunk in up to my ankles today trying to mow my lawn. You can go there right now and see it.
And the heavier the storm.
These are down the road.
No.
Yes. You didn't say that never, that water never changed.
Do you want to speak up?
Yeah, I'd like to do this for a second. Now, just going to talk about what I've known with down there for years. Brian's probably the only one here that remembers back in the day when the planning board used to meet in the basement by the air conditioners.
I remember.
I was there to support, okay, I meant out of us, okay? So, out of the board members. All right? I remember going there once to support Gene Bartlett for something. That basement was full of people. We had to stand on the stairs until he got up, of Fuller Shore peoples complaining back then, okay? Then all along permanent this, everybody showed up, some minutes of all the meetings complained about all the water running down Fuller Shores Road. Then back seven or eight years ago, I think it was, I built a house at the bottom of Fuller Shores and the left, in the corner of Edgewater. I tore down that house and I built that colonial. That went to Fuller Shores Road, if you're going to be honest, had six inches of ice on it with potholes. We were driving down Edgewater and going up Nelson that that road was so bad. And now all of a sudden, somehow I'm making water run uphill and now after 15 years of having problems, now someone's trying to get me to pay for it. Before we started, that engineer came, wanted to talk to Jamie. I told him, Jamie, give him all the stuff he wanted. He said, "We had a problem on the road." I hadn't built the road yet. He said they wanted to put catch basins up there, they wanted to try to fix some of the problems he had. I said, "If they wanted to do that, get it okay by the planning board," but I wasn't touching the road. And now all of a sudden, it never happened before until I did it. It's just not true.
We can see the water running. It literally runs from either side of the road.
Under the road.
Mr. Palucci, no, I mean.
Okay. You got to get up to the microphone, you got to get up to the microphone.
I just want to address Bob here. I appreciate what you're talking about. What we've seen, what used to be like a, pretty much a trickle of water, you know, westbound, not eastbound. Eastbound, that water's always flowing. Goes right down that whole north side of Fuller Shores past, since I've lived there and I've been there 35 years. But now what ends up happening is, and, yeah, I think you've encountered water there that nobody anticipated. There's a lot of water up there. When Mr. Schreier dug the, that farm porch place right across from Justine's Way, there was four feet of water in that hole. They pumped it for days before Andy Cruzetti could even put foundation walls in, excuse me. The problem we have now is the, I mean, in this time of year, it's not a big deal because it's water. But in the wintertime, it ices up and it flows so fast that it just continually crowns and you go through it, you get a little melt, you get a pothole in the ice, it builds up and up and up. My wife broke her wrist a few years ago in the dead of winter and the ambulance guys didn't want to come down the road because there was so much ice. In 35 years, I've never seen it like that. And it's right on the heels of Justine's Way.
So, you don't remember the winter I built that house, how thick the ice was there?
Yeah, it was a few years ago.
Yeah, before I built the road.
I, I guess.
Yeah, I hadn't put a bucket in the road yet when I built that house.
I think if you, if you ask, and I'm open to comments from anybody else in the room, that year was a lot of different snow, ice, rest, we had a lot of problems with the plow guy. He didn't have a heavy enough plow to cut it down. And I think that has more to do with the condition of that road that year than anything else. And I'm sure there's people here that will vouch for that because it was just a terrible year for snow. So, I just wanted to let you know that it's been, it's, maybe it was before, but it's much worse now. It's much worse since Justine's Way. No question about it. Thank you. Brian Clary. I actually live right next door to the house.
No, you weren't able to get Jamie here tonight, right? You don't have anybody here from his company?
Yeah. Could I ask one more question before we go? Just real quick, I'll go up there. I was, I had the copies of all the planning board notes from the previous meetings and I want to say conservatively three times, it's noted from, is it Jamie Vissinette?
Yep.
He's quoted in the thing. I believe it's you and perhaps Sylvester are said, because they're being questioned about the water.
Yeah.
They were said over and over and over, "There's not going to be any more water. If anything, it's just going to be controlled better, it's going to slow down, but you're not going to get a teaspoon of water more on your property." I think they were directing.
That was Attorney Mather, yes.
To Irving.
Pardon me?
To one of the residents, Mike Irvine?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I just want to point out that it was over and over and over.
Yes.
It was said about no more water. It's not going to increase the water anywhere. That didn't happen.
And we didn't go on your property yesterday when I took pictures of the water coming off and my engineer didn't want a trespass. But where's that sump pump running to? He said he kept seeing it come out at different flow rates when he went there. Is that what's pumping the water up there, the sump pump you just said you put in?
My sump pump's on past Justine's Way. That's nothing to do with it. I have a French drain under, under there as well that's running. That was done from day one. The reason I had to put the sump pump in is because when, when the spring came, when you hit the spring or whatever you did over there, the water just inundated this whole way. I think you should have had more drainage on that side of the property, bigger pipes, bigger swales, whatever, to capture that water and take it under and put it in the ground somewhere.
Those pipes said no water running.
Which is what we have proposed, which is what is proposed to fix it. And they have a plan already set up. Somebody's got the right plan hopefully to take care of it. It wasn't done right. I personally think. Obviously, there was no control. No one even made an inspection to see if it was done correctly. We didn't even know, there's not even.
Yes, Jeremy did go up there and inspect it. Yes, he did. You can't go, go saying that.
So, it's been inspected?
Yes, it's been inspected. And we, we can't be responsible for water that's under the ground. We have to be responsible for the water that hits the surface of the ground. That's what our purview is for the planning board. What you have up there is a spring. You know what a spring is? A spring is water that's under the ground and there's, it's traveling underneath the ground in a layer of gravel or whatever and there's usually a glacial till or a clay. It's an overburden, it's pushing down on it and the water will travel down until it reaches a spot where it can come out from the gravel and it's going to bubble up there. And that's what you have in your front yard. That's a spring.
I never had.
On the other side too.
Since all the construction trucks and everything is going in and out of that road, parking in front of our house, right where that mud exists right now, it's all related. You can never tell me that that is not construction-related.
I've lived in that neighborhood for 22 years and prior to that, there was some water on the road, but I have never seen the ice that accumulates, the way it accumulates, now inches of ice.
Yes.
Right in front of Justine's Way. That never happened, Mr. Palucci, before that development. I mean, that's just a given fact. So, the spring probably was there as you're saying, but something happened, in my opinion, in the construction that caused what's happened.
This gentleman over here is.
Is it Mr. Hope?
Yeah.
Somebody, you were talking about responsibility before, somebody needs to take responsibility for that.
Well, this gentleman over here just said that there was ice because it was a spectacular year for snow and ice, where the ice was flowing down the road.
But it was that way on the entire road.
Yeah.
It wasn't just that area.
Now, it's just, this past winter, we didn't, would you consider this past winter to be a bad winter? Anybody in this room? No. We had, I had to push a guy out, he got his car stuck in the, in the rut of ice because myself and Rocky Savis, he couldn't get out of the driveway. Couldn't get out, I mean, that's in a year where there wasn't any snow.
What year did Mr., who did you build the street?
Yeah, what year did you build the street? Oh, 15.
Yeah, the road was in 15, right?
2015.
So, I mean, we really are just talking about a few years.
To approve the construction or is it post-construction?
This is all hearings. This is the whole thing leading up to the construction. So, this is the approval of the plan, the first seven-minute meeting.
So, the oldest meeting we have is March 23, 2015. Take it this back and you have the minutes.
Yep. Yeah, we have had water crawl right along, yep. And that was, yeah, somebody said we had water right along, says so right in the minutes.
Well, it's always been, it's always been wet up there. There's a lot of water under the ground at the top of that hill.
And I know this gentleman, and I don't think he lied, he came to me before we were building it and wanted to put catch basins at the end of the road to catch the water, which I said we could work with Jamie and they could try to talk. If there was no water there, we wouldn't want to put catch basins in. So, it was there. I mean, and now you're saying, and Joe was an estimator, if this, if you hit a spring in the water, if I'm wrong, you can tell me, it's going to go through, the water's going to come up the least resistant. So, it's going to come up through the disturbed soil, right, on the sides of the road. It's all stone, it's all sand, it's to drain. That's the easiest place for the water to come up. So, you're trying to say that when I put the road in and I made a hole and I hit a spring supposedly, but it didn't pop up there and it's not going in my drainage, but somehow instead of coming up lower on the hill, it's an easier way to get through the ground, I pushed it up the hill underground through high pan and now it's bubbling up and coming down the street. Just, I'm not an engineer and I don't understand drainage, but it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense to me.
It's coming up through our front yard.
So, who are the engineers that have taken a look at this problem? I'm sorry that I, we've had, so have you as a neighborhood community had an engineer review it?
No.
No.
No. Okay.
But Mr. Palucci has engineers that should have taken care of all that.
Understood.
During construction.
Go ahead, thank you.
I've, because I'm retired and have been since, since before this project started, I visit a lot of these places and I go there year-round. Certainly, I've seen it four times a year. This year, I've seen it every month and I can see that there is a small problem. I got to tell you, it's a small problem. We have very, very many fully public streets with high traffic on them in much bigger puddles than that. So, I just, I just want to put that a little bit, you know, into, we do watch on how the thing is going. Now, he built himself something like 700, 800 feet of road, something like that. There's a problem in the last 30 or 40 feet. There's no problem above that. It's absolutely bone-dry for the entire, for the entire thing. It's a good-looking driveway. I mean, I can't call it a road because this is, it's not really a road, but it's a doggone looking driveway. He wouldn't have built crap right in the part that's, you know, that's the most important where other people can see it. And the whole rest of it is, it's a nice-looking job. But now, there's, there's a little bit, there's some extra water. I see the last two, I would have to ask, you know, an engineer would have to make an opinion of that, of how come the last two settling chambers or the last two chambers, however they call the chambers, those rocky, sway rocky ones.
The swales.
The last one has more water in it than I would expect. I mean, I, I was a, I can't believe how much water there is there. I mean, I'm very surprised. I'm with you on, on the surprise part of it. I can't believe how much water is in that hill.
It's the lowest point.
But, but we're not, this guy is not the, the road is not adding to it. You know, the, the water is not coming down the road and, and running into your properties. The road.
It's coming up through the road.
That's something, yeah, well, that's something else. Do you think it's only in the 50 feet that's under the road?
I walk every day.
Do you think it's only, do you think it's only in the 50 feet that's under the road?
It could be, I don't know.
I've been walking around there and I see, you know, the lot next door on both sides are mighty wet. It looks like there's a whole bunch of water underneath both houses, you know, the house to the left and the house to the right. Well, one has a small creek running through it, is what I would call it. And, you know, it's not on any drawing anywhere. The, the pipe, as long as there's any room left in the top of the pipe, you can't say the pipe's too small. I mean, if, if the pipe fills all the way up, I'm sure he'll change the pipe. But it's not filled all the way up and it looked like.
What would you do if it was in the wrong place?
What?
What would you do if the pipe's in the wrong place?
If, if there's water running out of it, it's not in the wrong place. Well, I mean, I, I would say, but I, instead of taking that one out, I would add another one.
It doesn't take all the water. It trickles, it trickles that way and the rest gets backed up and it's forcing its way through Fuller Shore and it's breaking Fuller Shore's asphalt. It comes under there, freezes, we get frost heaves, and we've already had to repave that. We just repaved that, didn't we Ted?
It's going underneath the property next door. It's going at a 45-degree angle into the property next door and goes underneath his driveway. I think he's got a piece of like 12-inch clay pipe under his driveway?
Yeah, it goes westbound over to the pit that's about halfway to the road. And that was put in, the original road, the original Fuller Shores Road, that little stretch of land that's just, just west of Justine's Way between those two driveways, it's like open in there, it's like a little grass there, that's where the old road was. And when Mr. Schreier came in, he excavated that whole area. That whole area, and you correct me because I think he might have been looking at it too, there was feet of water in that whole area where they excavated the old road out and started to cut the new road in. This is long before Mr. Palucci came in. There's been a lot of water on the top of that hill since long before I was here. And that's the point, is that that water was now found and diverted somehow, I don't know, I don't know how, but it needs to be redirected to, so it'll drain down the road and not ice the road up in the wintertime. I don't know how much money we spent this year on sand and salt. I mean, it was unfortunate just to try to cut the ice down in case there was an emergency down the street and we had to get emergency vehicles down there. It was almost impassable this year. This year was not a bad winter. It was almost impassable. Resting back in January. Resting back in January.
I don't know.
I don't even know...
This road looks like it's only twelve inches thick, uh, which would be a perfectly proper thickness for a road like that. How, how deep do you think he went? I mean...
I have no idea.
I mean...
I don't know. The water's up high there, so, I don't know.
The water table's at three feet, I perked all that lead years ago. Nothing, the water table's at three feet. And I, I know, because I had to build my house up and brought in a ton of fill.
The water table in your front yard is at less than six inches.
Yeah.
Because what you have there is water coming out on top of your yard. That's not three feet.
Around that corner, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so that's what a spring is.
Never had that before.
Never had it there before.
The, no, the spring was there before. The spring had to have been there before.
It wasn't rooted towards my property back then. It was now it's gone.
Yeah, it wasn't disturbed.
Looking at the way the, the road was, does it look like they altered the grading of, Zank? Does it look like they altered the grading? You got the plan in front of you, I don't.
Yes.
If they altered the grading of the road going up back? If they altered the grading of the, you know, from existing to post-construction?
If they did, it's less than a foot.
Yeah, so there's no, there's nothing he did to make that happen.
It looks like they didn't.
There's nothing they could have done to make that happen.
So what caused it?
I don't know.
Since everyone was here before, Brian, I mean, I appreciate your position completely. The problem is, is that we're now faced with tens of thousands of dollars as an association that we sure as hell can't afford. And it wasn't a bill, it wasn't a, a possible liability to us until that road went in. So, is it because the road went in that we now have to sit down and divide up thousands of dollars in costs to fix a problem that's affecting our road? That's supposed to be our responsibility because it's a private way? Is that what you're saying? I have a hard time understanding. I mean, I didn't, you know, Bob builds nice places. I like what he, I like what you do. But he's the guy that walks away with the checks. He's the one that made the money. And, and we're gonna sit here and have to face this bill. I don't, I don't understand how that's fair.
I have a comment on this. I feel like when we're having these discussions, we're weighing in on facts that we really don't understand. Um, we haven't had an engineering report. There hasn't been an engineer in front of us to explain any of this. I'm not comfortable making an assessment of whether there is a spring or whether there isn't a spring, because I'm not a specialist in that field, and I don't know that any of us are all water specialists and can weigh in on this. Would the group not be, if you're talking about spending tens of thousands of dollars, would it not be wise to consult with somebody who can ascertain with certainty that that's actually what's causing it? Because when you said earlier that there was water on, higher on the hill before the development went in, maybe that's a fact. And we also live in a community that has tremendous amount of water flow that's moving, it, it, we, that's the, we live in Lakeville, I talk about this all the time. It's, it's very worrisome. Um, in my own community, the water levels have gone up tremendously, just in our storm drain areas. So I feel like we need to have, I feel like I would prefer to have a specialist speak to, you know, exactly what's transpired here, rather than speculating based on what we think happened. That's my opinion, anyway.
That'd be nice. We have a hundred and fifty-dollar-a-year budget.
Is it our cost to bear? This is a private road.
It's a private road.
So, you know, I don't, I mean, how much is an engineering consult? Bob, you have, I mean, how much do these things cost? Is it a couple thousand dollars, you bring somebody in?
We have engineers to do whatever you ask them to do.
Yeah.
As I said earlier, I was asked to put, you know, to work with them to put catch basins up there. Why would you put in a catch basin if there wasn't a problem?
Right.
You wouldn't. So it was there, okay? And now wherever that sump pump's going, or whatever's going out there, because that's what Jamie thought it was yesterday, but he didn't want to walk in the yard. He says that, that stream keeps seeming to get heavier and slow. And he thought it was a sump pump, but he didn't want to trespass from the yard. All right? Maybe push the sump pump into my swale on that road or something, and let it go through the piping down the road or something. But, you know, this fifteen years of people with Strider and Debbie Blaze and everybody else, and, and ice on the road and water problems. And that's why I kept being very clear. I, we made that basin twice the size as we needed to, because of everybody's concern, you asked us to do that. We did all the stuff, but I was never gonna touch that road, because I had known firsthand for fifteen, eighteen years, they had a lot of problems, and I knew if I touched it, I was gonna own it. And that's why I said, if you want to do catch basins, talk to Jamie, talk to you guys, but I'm not touching it. I wasn't touching that road, and I'm not, I'm not gonna own that road. You know, and, and for anybody who thinks that, because if I did something wrong, I'm doing a project now, nobody came to meetings, now they want fences. I don't have to put them in, they can tell you it's not part of my permit. And I'm putting fences in for the people, because if they come and ask, I would have done it. But I didn't do that, okay? And, and I'm not touching that road. I, I said it all along, I'm not touching that road. After eighteen years, I'd have to be a moron to touch that road and try to do anything to it, because then I'm gonna own it, and everyone's gonna come and say, and then your schoolgirl will say, "He did it." And I didn't do it.
So why didn't you bother?
Huh?
Why didn't you bother with the area then?
I wasn't touching the road.
Well, you obviously did, because you had to make a road. But other than that, I mean, you know, if you saw it, if you went there when the weather's bad, or even, "It's gonna rain this weekend, come on down."
I took pictures yesterday, it was running.
Yes.
Yesterday, every other road in Lakeville was dry. And it was a stream coming off of their house, out off the road and down the street. Not a drop was coming over my berm, off my road or anywhere there. Brian went and looked at it one day.
Comes down, I see it.
Yeah, but not off of my property, though.
Yeah, yeah, I've been there.
I have pictures.
But I can tell you what I see. We have pictures.
Where's the water coming from, if you wanna be honest?
It comes from here.
Exactly, where's my road? Way down here. That's Justine's Way. The water's coming from way up there.
And where is that?
That's going up towards eighteen, this is the peak. That's going way up there, the water's coming down. It's not coming from me.
So it's going uphill.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, think about it, water goes uphill?
It runs both ways.
Right, it goes way down.
The engineers, yeah, the water run uphill? Come on, please, I'm not even gonna have that conversation.
No.
Give me a, water doesn't run uphill, it's ridiculous.
Actually, it can.
It can.
Say?
So how does that happen? And which pressure does that come from? On the asphalt, what pressure does that come from? Go up the asphalt.
There's no pressure on the asphalt.
No, the asphalt can redirect it.
It can redirect it downhill.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's redirecting to down it.
But, this is, this is, um, okay.
Yes.
Can I speak, please? I just wanna make a few comments, and it'll be the same, okay? I'm the president of the Road Pressure Association. First of all, I'll do respect. Our, our group as a whole, fully and, and strongly disagrees with, with everything you said earlier in terms of the general status, and things of this situation not being there. If not, if it wasn't there, in terms of it's actually happening, then once Mr. Palucci did the work, and that work was, was being done and finished, that's when the problem started. How exactly it started, we don't know. And secondly, I agree with Ms. Mankowski that perhaps it has to have a professional look of, of, of some engineers who can take a look at it and see what has happened, and give it, gives a fuller and better assessment. Because I can assure you that according to Mrs. Zankowitz, if there were, oh, say puddles or frozen sections in the roads like we have at Fuller Shores in any of the other public roads in this town, you would have thousands of people visiting you and wanting to hang you if you didn't fix it as quickly as possible. It is a dangerous situation. It is so dangerous that...
You don't live there.
You don't live there.
The mail wouldn't get delivered.
I lived with bigger puddles.
They stopped delivering mail to us that wouldn't come down the road, that's a fact.
Yeah, excuse me if I may?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make a point, and that is the fact that...
Yes, I'm sorry.
There are, there are people from the fire department and, and, and the people who have driven the, uh, the, um, ambulances who have said, "This place is unsafe to drive in." And who have called it, I mean, you know, like a public menace. I would, you know, that's no joke, because we've got elderly people living down there. And God forbid, if there's, if there, if there were ever any kind of a need during the worst, during the kind of weather we've had this past year, I won't say the weather, the weather wasn't that bad, but the road conditions, it's very likely that they could not have gotten down to get those people and gotten back out safely. There's no need for that. We wanna get the problem solved. If we can go out and find a way to hire an engineer to do the work that Ms. Mankowski suggested, and bring it back here, what's the next step? That's what I'd like to know. What's the next step?
I mean, to me, I think that when you have a professional opinion, now we know with some certainty. If that opinion was challenged by, you know, another engineer, then you have, they have a discussion. But at least you have professionals that are weighing in on the source of the water. I'm very comfortable, uncomfortable, because I don't know how water works, and we talk about a spring. You know, how can we make an assessment as to whether it's one person's responsibility or another's without understanding the science behind the problem? Um, but I think if they give us an assessment and they say, you know, that, that there potentially could be, that the fact that this area was disturbed could be a factor. I will tell you, we had some trees cut down in our neighborhood. The amount of water that has pooled on the street near that storm drain as a result of the loss of those trees is absolutely unbelievable. I would have never thought that cutting down a few trees would have a significant impact, but I know nothing about water. So, you know, or roads, or road construction. So these, you know, I think these are important things to consider.
Well, obviously, there are a few people on the board who have difficulty believing what all of the residents in, in our, in our association have experienced.
I'm in the business, I've been doing it for forty-five years. I'm an engineer. I know how it works, I know the science of water, I know the science of soils, I know what a spring is. I, you, if you talk to an engineer, let me know when you're gonna bring him in. I'm gonna talk to the, um, the consulting engineer for the town, for the planning board. And I'm gonna have a conversation with him about what his thoughts are, and then we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Do you already have a consulting engineer? They're not gonna look at our thing?
We, pardon me? Podium, please.
I'm Gwen Lang, and I'm just interested, you already have a consulting engineer. So, could they help us out?
We have a consulting, we have a consulting engineer, we don't have a budget. I don't have a budget. I don't have any money to pay the guy.
He's not a town employee.
He's not a town employee. He works for us if we have a developer come in. Very similar to what our highway surveyor did on this project.
Usually, the developer pays their tab.
Yeah. What our highway surveyor did on this project here was he reviewed the plans, he reviewed the drawings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, we didn't have to go to the consulting engineer.
So you wanted, if, if we hire an engineer, you wanted your consulting engineer and that consulting engineer to work together?
I want them to have a conversation, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just needed verification.
Yep, and that way, yes...
With you as well.
Because I'm, I'm not going to, you know, have a, an engineer coming in here from you folks and not have my ducks in a row. I don't wanna waste time. Because if we had your guy come in here, and he tells us what he thinks, and then I get my guy to come in here, and he tells us what he thinks, if we can just put them together, it would work. So if you let me know.
But as in, why, I just don't understand why you can consult a little bit with us.
Spend the money and just design something to fix it. Why waste the money on that? Just create, you know, you're spending money that we know needs to be fixed. We could fight about who's gotta fix it later.
Well, it sounds like somebody in the neighborhood said they wanted to fix it before this happened.
I'm saying we could fight about it before this...
No, it sounds like somebody...
We know it's happening.
We, there's a gentleman over here that said that we should put catch basins in before Mr. Palucci built his...
I can, listen, when, when, when Bob first came, the first meeting we had, I had no problem with, with, with any construction going on back, because I told them that the first day. And he got up there and said, we talked about the water problems and what was gonna happen, and he's told us that we shouldn't have anything to worry about, that he would work with us. That was right out of his mouth, that's what he told us. We, you know, and that's what he said, and that's what he tried, that he would work with us. We're here to say, "Work with us." Maybe we can sit down and work something out, rather than spend all this money to, to, to do a survey, and I know what this stuff costs. You might as well, we already know a budget, what we think. We've had our in-house engineer, so to speak, has something designed. We've already, I think we already have a plan, don't we? Don't, don't we have an engineered plan of what we...
We put the previous plans in.
Well, we have, we have a, um, an estimate of the cost that's gonna take care of the water problem.
Yeah, we're looking at thirty, we're looking at, we got the price of thirty thousand dollars. I mean, why?
French drains.
A sub-drain?
Sub-drain. Uh, that will go down to our, uh, pipes further down the road.
Yeah.
And down Fuller Shores.
Through, across all the front of the...
No, it won't go onto the, onto the road.
Across the front of the lot to that side.
It's coming right at the beginning of Justin's Way, basically.
What about the other side?
But that was a thirty, that's a thirty thousand dollar job.
Oh, sure, what about the other side?
Uh, which, well...
Because it comes up on both sides of Justine's Way?
Yeah, well, on both sides, yeah. Yeah, we'd be taking care of both sides. And bringing it down, down the hill, down Fuller Shores.
Westbound.
And we were also maybe thinking about hooking it up maybe the other way to a bend in the street to the other catch basin, but it's kinda going uphill a little bit.
Right. Oh, yeah, well, okay, well, um, if you, I talk to you, pardon me?
How far, how far west, east?
I don't care, don't, it's trivial, it's not even worth talking about. Um, you have your engineer come in, and I'm gonna talk to my engineer, to the town engineer, and I'm gonna ask him if it's feasible to build a road to divert the water that would cause this much grief and aggravation. I'm gonna give him that set of plans. That's what I'm gonna do. Because, um, I don't see it. Being in the business for so long, I don't see it.
Could you say that again, please?
I wanna give the engineer that works for the town a copy of that plan, and I'm gonna tell him, these folks think that building this road caused water to be diverted on either side and to come out as a spring onto Fuller Shores Road. What do you think?
That would be useful.
Yes, it would. It's gonna be useful for me.
Well, here's, here's my concern.
But you might, what?
Well, the, the, well, I'm just, the, at the top, we have mentioned earlier that at the top of the hill, there was water coming out of there before Mr. Palucci ever came in.
Long, long ago.
Right, so, you know, to me, this is, you know, that you, is this a naturally occurring, something that's changed?
Possibly a naturally occurring, pre-existing condition.
Which is why I think we've got to have professional opinions weighing in.
That's why, I'm getting the engineer, you know.
And that you should as well, so that you guys have some, some evidence to support the position, you know, that you're thinking right now. You can't imagine that it could be that expensive, maybe a couple, I don't know, I really don't know.
Look for the engineer, a couple grand.
That's what I'm thinking, a couple thousand dollars. Money well spent.
Maybe because the trees were removed, and so all the water that was in the forest, so to speak, came forward to Fuller Shores. And that's all we want fixed, it's so fixed. I mean, I was the one in the ambulance, and let me tell you, with a broken wrist going to go over that, they, it was awful. And I wouldn't wish that on anyone. So I would hope that, that they could, we could come to some sort of agreement and get things fixed, so that we don't all go broke yet.
Does Michael Irving still live there?
Yep.
Is he here tonight?
No, he couldn't. I get short, short notice on the meeting.
Who's that, Jay?
Yeah. Well, Mike Irving.
No, the, the residence in this two thousand fifteen-
His residence, as you move down Fuller Shores Road, if you move down, it kind of straightens out till it goes into an S curve. As you pass in and through that S curve westbound, on the right-hand side, you'll find a big open pit. And that pit collects the water that runs off and goes down through that, that culvert that's strider installed underneath all those, those front yards. The problem that, and I'm speaking for Michael, and, you know, I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent, but what happens when that tops out in that collection pit, it flows all the way through his yard. That's happened probably, again, my experience only, since that house is in there, a couple of times. Maybe, maybe, maybe three times that I can remember. But it also collects when the water table gets up that high in that pit. It also collects on the south side of Fuller Shores Road. Don't know how it gets there, unless it just goes underneath.
There's a pipe under the roof.
Was there a pipe over there? So, I mean, there's a lot, that's the, that's the point of where all this is going to. And-
Okay, so that's great. So if you guys talk to your engineer, let me know when you're going to be able to bring him, or once he has a discussion with you, and I'm going to talk to our engineer very soon, very soon. Okay?
Okay.
And do, um, how much notice do we get before the meetings? Because this was like this run, like, oh, there's, we're having a meeting.
Well, I got an email. Said, um, we're going to have a meeting, and I said, yeah, we're going to have a meeting. And I told Kathy, put us on the agenda for eight hours.
In the future, Mr.-
You're not going to.
What? In the future, Mr. Hope, would it be possible for us to have at least a seven-day notice? He really wasn't fair to a lot of our residents. They just couldn't make it.
No, he just whacked me with the email this morning. I was like-
No, I had emailed before.
I know you had. I know you had. And I had also asked for minutes of meetings before, and I had never got them. So I was going to come in without the minutes of meetings because I didn't have any information.
No, I would say, I, I don't mind coming to a meeting. I show notice. I'm just saying it isn't fair to the association as a whole, because there are a number of people who can't make it on that short a notice. And to my knowledge, usually when they have meetings of this sort, at least a seven-day notice is, is provided.
Okay, we'll try to do it in fourteen days.
Fine. Jeffrey, thank you.
So that would be the next meeting, which is the end of the month. Rita has something to say.
Just to say, for all the residents, you can go on the town's website and sign up so whenever the planning board schedules their agenda, you'll automatically get an email that they post your agenda and you can look to see.
So I didn't say, the agenda this week?
Oh, this isn't on the agenda?
No.
Yeah.
No, I think you dropped the blob.
The next one, the next, the next one, Brian, if you're going to schedule it, Kathy's
scheduling stuff. You only need forty-eight hours' notice to post the agenda. Kathy's good about getting it out. It's on Monday.
You have to send a thing down to the blob of our agenda, it says, please be aware of the coverage of such a change.
So you know, because that way you don't have to.
I, I, I guess what I'm, I'm thinking, as I'm listening to all of this, is that one of the things that the Fuller Shores people were hoping, is from what I, when I'm listening to them, is that they would hope that Mr. Palucci would, it's probably a joint effort, and we're not asking him to pay everything. We haven't even gotten that far. What we're saying is, let's look at this together.
Exactly.
And I think what's disappointing tonight-
He just walked out.
-is that he walked out, and he, he says, not my problem. And I think that's what's very concerning. So I would hope, I would hope-
Yeah.
-to be fair to the residents here who are upset, that he would have enough respect for us, that he would at least come to the meetings and offer to say, well, maybe we can switch things around a little bit. I mean, if we have to switch things around a little bit, they, he can.
No, I, I understand. And I know why he left.
So I'm, I'm just making it public that I feel like-
Oh, yeah. I know why he left, and, um-
We haven't established any responsibility. I just want to be very clear about that. I haven't, I have not convinced of any responsibility or source issue. So until we've gotten that cleared up-
But if we do, we're expecting some cooperation.
But once we do, and I have to say, in my experience of working with him, he's been very amicable and willing to work for the town, but I also can appreciate not wanting to take responsibility if there's something that you don't know, that you believe is far certain is not your responsibility. That's why you think an engineer's opinion would-
But he would have, he said he would have helped do the work before if people wanted to do the work, if people wanted to get the work done.
Wes, I just wanted to make a statement. We don't have to argue about it. Thank you.
No, no, I'm not arguing. I'm, I'm telling you what he said.
I hear him.
Okay. All right. So we'll continue this hopefully from, on the thirtieth.
The next meeting's on, on the thirtieth, so we can get it on the agenda for the thirtieth?
Let's see if I can find our engineer.
And if not, then we'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Just about an hour. It's a public hearing, an open public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, section eight point seven, temporary licenses for mobile home storage, box trailers, to designate the building commissioner as license authority for such uses and make other administrative changes. Okay. What are the other administrative changes? Do we have any?
I've read through it. I don't have any objection to changing it from, basically, it's the board of selectmen that's being removed and replaced with building commissioner in terms of issuing temporary licenses for mobile homes.
Okay.
And Brian, the zoning board review advisory committee took Nate's advice. He, he, he just feels this streamlines the process. This is what for when people get displaced by fire.
Oh, yeah.
And instead of having-
I remember writing the bylaw.
Instead of having to be scheduled for a next selectman's meeting-
Right, right.
-he can grant them an immediate permit.
Absolutely. I think it's a great, great idea.
It was three times, if I may, Brian, three times a house burned. And the selectmen had met that night, and they'd come in the next day, and it's-
They don't have that many fires, so that's a-
I know. So all three times-
Not on wood.
Never failed.
They could have stopped having meetings. Maybe houses stopped burning down. All right. So, um, do we, do we have a motion?
Motion to close the hearing unless there's any further discussion.
Do we, we want to represent, do we want to have a motion to represent this with the town?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why don't you just, you're going to make a motion so you can make a recommendation at town meeting, so-
That's what I want to do. Yeah.
I recommend this for the town meeting.
Jonathan, don't they have to close the hearing first? No?
No, it's not, not that. I mean, first of all, you got other bylaws to review. You don't need to close anything down. So you can just, you can go one by one and make a motion to recommend.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Second public hearing. To amend the zoning bylaw, section six point seven, site plan review subsections six point seven point three, procedure residential to increase the threshold of earth disturbance that triggers the need for site plan review.
Do you want me to speak to that, Peter, or do you?
I can if you'd like to. Go ahead, though.
Yeah. But it's currently, it's three thousand square feet of cubic, is it cubic?
Square feet.
Square feet of land disturbance. And we're not sure if that, we had to put that whole, for stormwater management.
Yep.
And we're updating, we just updated our stormwater plan. And in there, it's usually an acre of land. So Nate's not sure if maybe it was thirty thousand square feet to begin with, and somebody left a zero off. But I don't make those mistakes on the warrant. But it's just, with the EPA, it's the acre of land. So it's just changing it from three thousand square feet to forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty.
To be consistent with EPA regulations?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we forward this unless there's discussion to town meeting.
I'd like to discuss.
You'd like to discuss?
Yep.
Go for it.
It's, it's just for the benefit of the camera, basically. The, the, there will be some, some surprises in town as we start doing this process, because it actually means there's going to be, you know, quite a few site plan reviews. Because in a, you know, in a community with, you know, seventy thousand square foot lot, it's very, very easy to disturb forty-three thousand square feet. So there's likely to be quite a few of them. Now, I know they say, well, you're increasing it. The three thousand square feet of ground that was the old rule was so ridiculous that we didn't apply the rule. We just ignored the rule entirely and just never did any of the site plan reviews that were required of us to do. And now, now that it's possible to do them, I mean, there isn't any way that a volunteer committee could, could do three thousand square foot site plan reviews. You'd-
Your vegetable garden, you know?
Yeah. It, it just, it just too, too, it's just silly. So now that it's doable, it's doable. The other thing, what this is also going to do, is there's something that's going on now, that now that the, that we're in, we were in the middle of a lull for, you know, quite a while. There was quite a construction lull. And now we're, I guess, sort of a boom. What's happening is we have a whole bunch of formates that are getting driveways onto reasonable-sized streets, you know, streets that bear quite a bit of traffic, like Peter was mentioning about, you know, on School Street and County Street and stuff like that, where we really should be involved in how we get this driveway onto the road. Now, we're not responsible for curb cuts, because that's, it's an existing road, and the state gives that authority to the board, the board of selectmen. But how to get, you know, how to get across the ditch, and there are, because this, this, all these people that were in here, were in here for a small example of what happens all the time in a whole bunch of neighborhoods, where if you get a driveway going downhill onto a crossroad, well, there's a, there's a bunch of water that flows out, and we just spent an hour talking about what happened at that joint. Well, we're going to have to do that. We're going to have to have that talk ahead of time during site, during this site plan review that we're voting on right this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's exactly accurate? That's exactly, and I-
Peter brought it up first.
I actually think it'll be positive, that we'll actually have the chance to chime in on a, on a lot when it needs to be, when we need to do something about it, you know? Not prevent them from building on it, but merely just put our two cents in and get it corrected right away, and that's the cheapest time to do it. So.
Okay. So there was a motion, right, to present this?
And now?
Present this, um-
Yeah, make it to a motion to recommend approval, just so it's clear at town meeting what you're doing.
I just want to go back here, you made that recommendation.
Motion to recommend approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nicely put, thank you. Very good.
Okay, the next one is a public hearing to amend the, guys, sorry. Cut it to the back.
A little bit.
Okay. Amend the zoning bylaw, section two point O, definitions in section six point four point six, specific uses by special permit, and update regulatory citations, combine reviews into single marijuana uses section, and designate the zoning board of appeals as the special permit granting authority. Does anyone have anything to say on this?
I have a question.
Yes.
Let's see. We didn't, we didn't draft this as a planning board. This was drafted by, who drafted this?
Town council.
But who gave it to town council?
Katie Lopman. The board of selectmen requested-
The board of selectmen, this is the board of selectmen's movement. And it's drafted by Katie. But it's, it's not our, it's not our motion.
And I'll just mention, the first two you read, Brian, are on the annual town meeting. This one is going to be on the special.
In the fall?
No. On June third at six thirty, we have the special. So this is article-
So this will actually be ahead of everything else? This will be-
The annual. We have five articles on the special.
Okay.
Do you know why the board of selectmen wanted to make this change? What was their reasoning?
Well, when, is that okay if I speak to it, Brian? Yeah. Initially, medical marijuana was approved first, and we had the bylaw to deal with medical. And at the time, it fell under the regulation of the Department of Public Health of the state. And then in the meantime, recreational was approved, and that Department of Public Health now, it falls under the Cannabis Control Commission. So part of what we refer to a lot of the medical, they, we have CMR numbers, those have all changed. And then it was advised that we put it all, and combined the two, medical under marijuana uses, and to update with all the laws that have changed.
So, just out of curiosity, does anybody else remember when this, you-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I have a question after you.
No, after you.
Oh.
What's your question?
Oh, okay. The, I, I just have some, a couple of things to check. This one, I see that the special, well, I've read it a couple of times, but the special permit got, the special permit per se is switched from-
Oh, yeah. The granting authority, yeah.
The permit, the permit granting authority for this particular special permit will be the zoning board of appeals. We sent a notice to all the individual members of the zoning board of appeals, and not a one of them is here. We, we told them.
Do you want to speak to them?
Please.
I did send a message to them, and I had two responses I wanted to read into the record. The first one was from Chris Carmichael. It's an email to me. I have no suggested changes. I will not be able to attend. Thank you, Chris. And the other one was from Joe Urbansky, also an email. Hi, Kathy, Dawn, I will not be able to attend. I have no issues with this as it is written. Those are, that's the responses I received about it.
And part of the reason, too, is right now, with the, with applicants are going to two different boards, and where the zoning board of appeals handles almost all special permits, the selectmen thought it would, to streamline the process, to send all applicants to one board.
It was, um-
So, so right, right now, you have a copy of this?
I do.
It, it seems to say that the special permit goes to the zoning board of appeals. Now, on buildings that, like, if they were going to propose a building, like, one, one or two of them that's coming up, are going to be buildings that are coming out of the ground. When I say coming out of the ground, I mean, it will be a, you know, a brand-new building on a, on a blank pad. Where this, there would be a site plan review for that. That seems to still be, no one took that site plan review away from the planning board?
No. Right.
So that, that-
Right. It will still, it will still come.
I want to note that the town council is nodding his head in a vertical way.
That's correct. This amendment does not change site plan review.
Okay. Even though, there's a note here that says detailed site plans, that detailed site plans are part of the special permit, but they are just, like, what we've been doing so far, is we're using the same old plans from the old site plan in a special permit plan. There isn't any, there aren't like two different kinds of site plans. So this, this all makes sense, but that, so the, the, the planning board still does site plan review, and now the zoning board of appeals will do the special permit. Everyone, everyone with that.
Know what, want the recommendation from the plan.
To Zink's point, let's say it's not a new construction, and it's a remodel, and they are changing things like lot coverage, and parking lots, and entrances and exits, and it, that would still fall under our site plan review. Is that correct?
Sure. If it qualifies, it means-
If it's a, whether it's a warehouse, a factory, or anything.
Because the medical had to come back. Remember when they changed?
Correct. I just did, yeah.
Yeah. How about change of use period? Because you're going to be getting a different volume of vehicles.
Right.
That would trigger that. Yeah, well, it only triggers it if somebody deems it to be triggered, you know? People only get triggered by what they want to get triggered by.
Use doesn't, right, wouldn't necessarily, parking lots.
Right. Yeah, we've had, we've had change of use in buildings in town that we never get notified on.
But on that medical building you did.
All the time. I'm, I'm talking about any kind of use, any kind of use, you know? And we get, don't get notified on. of use, any kind of use, you know? And we get, don't get notified on, you know? So
I don't know about that.
I don't either. But, you know, it's funny when you're coming down the road and some, and the people, when you're talking to your friends and they say, hey, why'd you guys allow that? And I didn't know anything about it. So, and that's clears me of it anyway. What were you gonna say?
I just wanted to know what the history was because, you know, when this was originally set up, there was a reason why it was assigned to the planning board. And I don't know what the history was and why it was assigned, why the decision was to not have put it with ZBA in the very beginning. I mean, I don't want to keep putting you on the spot, but if, does anybody have, if anybody knows why that is, was it a separation of powers kind of thing? Were we looking at it like we wanted to have more boards looking at things? I don't, I don't know what the rationale was behind having that be on a separate track. No, I don't know.
Reed, if, oh, not to, not to change the subject, but it's on the same subject, kind of. Is there any thought to the process that by going to the ZBA, you said streamline the process, however, the ZBA meets once a month and we meet twice a month? And I'm not, I'm not advocating that we keep it. I'm merely just, you know, picking holes at this.
But they meet, they, there's been a few times this year, they'll meet more than
Okay.
Once a month, absolutely.
And, and so, you know, I know that I, we read the, we heard the emails, but the, the chairman doesn't feel as though this is going to, like, basically inundate them? I mean, it's, it's a lot.
No, I think they've actually been getting out earlier than the planning board lately.
Did you say that he felt that we'd not
The ZBA's been getting out earlier than the plan. You guys have been meeting much later than the ZBA has.
Because these things have been taken long, long ago.
And other issues that come before the board.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, your first comment, I, I think that's all I needed to hear. The streamlining process, I made my point at the zoning board review advisory committee, that I'm really not concerned about streamlining.
But even just the findings, the four findings, this is, you know, like Kathy will say, they do the list of findings.
That's what they do.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
You know, that's what they're expert at.
Well, when we went through the first process, with, we were building the road, right? I mean, that's what we were, we didn't, hadn't had another marijuana facility coming through, and we hadn't had this sort of thing happen. And Lorraine actually did a great job along with other people, putting together that sort of checklist. Now we've went, we've gone through our first, it was a little clunky, but that's because it was new. This is a totally new industry in town. There's a lot of things to be considered. I feel like we're going to, you know, lose a little bit of knowledge transferring it over, although I'm sure that the ZBA, you know, has lots of knowledge. And they haven't done one of these yet. I guess they've done medical.
And, and they do right decisions all the time, you know?
Yeah, they do right decisions all the time.
And they pass on the bigger ones. They have town council. They pretty much draft the decision and then have town council review it. It's like what they do.
Right.
You know, and I guess the selectmen just weren't, you know, because they thought maybe the Board of Selectmen would be the special permit granting authority, because we actually are on tattoo parlors, believe it or not. You know, so they tossed around, you know? And where the planning board is the 40R, granting authority.
I think the other, the other thing is, what happens to these, to these meetings, especially these early-on meetings, is if, if you show up to the meeting and if you bring town council along, the meetings always go better. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, that, that's part of it, you know?
And I just come along because I've been
You help by coming with the council?
In the process, and I, I know there's always questions, you know, and if, and if someone's not here to answer them, you know, if no one was here, I just
But that has
I'm in the office anyways at this time.
When you switch over.
Definitely.
What?
I, I agree with Zink. When you, when you switch over, those two things that he just mentioned should go with them.
Yeah.
It's really, it, there was, there was a lot, there was a lot, there was a lot to that, you know? So, that's, that's all I'll say about this.
They're just, the, the applicants just aren't used to this stuff at all. I mean, they just don't
No, they're sorry.
No, and they'd gone through the process with, although the medical's different than the retail, but, you know, the, the site plan review is still with the planning board.
Right on. Mr. Chairman, if I may, on that, on that point, I did notice in here that it used to say, or does say now, shall require a special permit and site plan approval from the zoning, from the planning board. It's gonna be changed to shall require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. You'll notice the words "and" site plan approval is stricken. So if the question comes up, the point of that is not to basically remove these from site plan approval, it's to remove, because it's changing to a different board, those words are taken out. But if this project comes in and requires site plan approval, it has to get site plan approval. Taking those words out does not strip the planning board of its site plan approval authority. It's just to make sure that it doesn't transfer that authority to the ZBA once they get the special permit process.
Well, it depends on, it depends on how it goes.
Exactly.
If someone says, gee, do I have to get a site plan review? Well, it doesn't say you have to. Okay, so you guess you don't have to.
No, you read the site plan approval by law.
Yeah, well, sometimes
Yeah, you didn't take that out. That didn't get, that didn't get deleted.
We, we've had town meetings where everything hasn't gone into the, into the, the book, so.
Hmm. If you ask me, let's just put it this way, if the project comes in and it triggers site plan review, you get site plan review.
Right.
The fact that the bylaw silence somewhere else about it is not gonna control.
Right.
That's, that's good.
Absolutely. A motion, Brian?
Go for it.
A motion to forward this
For approval?
This to, for approval at town meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What? It's nay. I'm a nay. Sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just abstain.
Abstain.
I'll abstain. I don't think that passes, no, does it?
No, you need
It does.
It passes because abst, an abstent, an abstention is acceptance.
Oh, okay.
Well, actually, if that doesn't count, it's a majority of those voting. You got essentially three votes, two to one.
Oh, the abstent, the, oh, that's fine.
Yeah. You get two yes votes, one no. Majority of those voted.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought it was gonna be a no, but I'm not gonna change my vote now.
But you get, so, for the report to the town meeting, you can report the vote.
Oh, I will.
Planning board voted five members, two in favor, one opposed, two abstentions.
Oh, I will. Because when I'm at town meeting, I'm talking for myself. When I'm here, I'm talking for the planning board. Just, you know, it's the way it goes. Okay, number four on the
Yes.
Oh, yes. I'd like to close the public hearing.
Second? Or do you need a
Oh, no, yeah, motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So Jamie's not here tonight, so I can just
You're standing?
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Why didn't you speak up earlier? I knew it was me.
Oh, he didn't want to walk in.
Well, it was crime, it was crimes. Jamie did it while he was at prime.
Form A.
I, I really did.
Comments on
I apologize for not getting involved, but I, and I worked for prime years ago too, but I didn't have anything about this project.
Fair enough.
That's okay.
Don't be careful what you walk into.
Yeah, exactly.
So, can I ask a question before we get started looking at this? This land is still owned in chapter 61, right? It is, still?
I can
I can't, I can't
I can discuss it. Thank you.
Have a very nice
I can.
Okay. Because I'm just wondering what, you know, has the decision been made as to whether or not this
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the Board of Selectmen decided that the town is not interested in, in taking first refusal on this, on this property. On just this property, on this side of the street.
Okay.
And I, I, I saw it at two separate meetings of the Board of Selectmen, and plus, we have it on this front of Middleborough Gazette, explaining the same thing. And this doesn't affect the other side at all.
Right.
Because the other side now is definitely still in 61A.
Right.
The industrial side.
Right.
So, not, not to, I, I, I hear your, what, what the selectmen plan on, they, they
They gave up the first
So is this signed off? It's, it's released?
Yes, they signed off on it, yes.
All taxes have been
They voted.
All taxes have been squared away as far as
No, no.
Oh, no.
I believe they would vote to release it, and then they would go into a development situation. And then as the lots were sold off, they would then get their tax money.
Lot by lot?
I don't know.
I don't know.
It's up to them.
I'm sure the guy has to sell at least one lot to pay the bill.
Yeah.
To get out of 61A.
I don't know. Why would you say that?
I don't know.
Because I know what the bill is.
Well, at least one, you know? At least $200,000.
Oh, is that right? I, I don't know.
I, I know what the bill is. But I'm not supposed to know it on TV.
No, no, I, I don't, I didn't ask you to release. I'm merely just curious. Okay.
Yeah.
But their, this side of the street is, is available for development.
I would entertain a motion, because I think it's where it's approval not required. And we have the correct frontage, it looks like.
Yep.
We have adequate area, it looks like.
No wetlands.
No wetlands.
Completely.
High and dry. Can look at it some more if you want. Take it home with you. You can look at it some more.
Uh, I move, we certify it. I would second Zink's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 What was the motion?
We certify it.
Aye. Certify it as an A and R.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it the ninth?
Today is the ninth.
Five nine.
Is that right?
I, I made sure that
Um, I'm gonna be
I believe, yeah.
Five nine.
I just wanted to
And outside our three.
Force there again. No, whoa.
What, by the way, we got blamed. We were blamed for letting the solar field go.
Excuse me, could I just ask if you do sign them tonight?
Yeah, for signing them.
In the future.
Process of, yep.
Great.
We actually have to, we have to check this on other
Does it need to be a blue pen?
Because it was not
Blue or black.
Yeah. It was apparently a fault that, that the thing got done.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not a bad thing being in the back.
I know, huh?
Well, if I remember
Come on, let's go, come on.
If I remember
That means third period by now, no?
The guy was crying, that he only had four days left. We're gonna have to get signed within four days, or the project was never gonna happen.
Okay.
And we signed it.
Do you want to sign it?
And we paid for it.
Is that four?
Let me, I'll send them back.
Yeah, the MyLabs, the paper plans, they're good to us. It's just a MyLab.
Right.
So that's all you want is MyLab, right?
Yeah, that's our, that's
Oh, really?
Oh, sorry, we're doing the other ones.
How do you want to fold it?
You might Oh, you Hmm. It's ready to fold it.
So you have one that's an A and R as well?
Yes, I do.
Very nice.
Were you here for the first, first section of the meeting?
Mine's really messy on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
Very messy, I guess. The first headed one.
But only sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah?
It's true.
I want a nice yellow jacket, badge on it that says puddle police.
Puddle police?
Puddle police.
Nice.
Oh, God. That's fun.
You know it's gonna be a stressful one.
I went
I chose up to two packages of heat.
Yeah. Bring action.
I usually have my seven-words
How was that one, guys? Just a basic attempt?
I still have a coat on.
One.
Is that me? Yep.
That land court?
Land court, no.
It's not that confusing.
Well, no, the green Why did you do that? Usually that's means it's going to win.
Did I put four?
Four nine.
Can you change that to five? Sorry.
Um
Duh.
Oh.
Can you?
Yep.
I wonder why we should go into land court.
Maybe it is part of the land court parcel. I don't know.
It could be.
Yep.
Maybe it comes from out of 61A?
No.
No? That wouldn't be an issue.
That's on mark.
Okay.
Zink. Zink.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Is there one more?
And a four.
Um, I think Peter has this. Hold it up. Okay. Plan of land at 105 County Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Self-clos redevelopment.
I saw the, I saw the, the, for sale and, for sale and sold plans?
Yeah.
That's pretty much what happens.
That's what happens now.
Up and down.
And, and this, not to, not to
No.
But I know that there's like a back way in there right out, like a cut tree path or something.
Yeah, that, that is, you wanna start?
Go right ahead.
Go right ahead. Jeff Yonquist, Outback Engineer. This little cut thing in the back, that's referred on a couple of plans. It's, it's referred to as old county road, but there is no description of it, or there is no legal whatever. It's just on a couple of plans. Old plans. We listed them on there. And it's, there's no dimension or anything. And usually if there's an old road like that, what we did is just throw two rods because they were always, you know, when they created the roads, there were always two rods, which is 33 feet. That's why we put it on there. But our actual deed goes up to this, this line. And somebody may have rights to walk down that path, so we just put it on there.
Bob Harvey's old house?
Huh?
Bob Harvey's old house?
Yes.
Did he move?
I don't, I don't know. Somebody bought it, so they're, they're
There must have moved. There was no one in there today.
Huh?
There was no one living there today.
No, no. They're, they're, they're gonna cut it off, I guess, redo the house and, and build another one on this lot. And then they're gonna keep the remaining parcel here.
What's that? 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 What's that?
There is a sign for that old county road, just stuck in the ground way down. I don't know if that's a legitimate, like, town sign or not, but I think it's something that...
But it is. There is two plans that do, when I did the research, there are two plans that show it, but they give no description or anything. All they do is show it.
Town was together.
Right down here, yeah? Like...
Yep. That's a wicked old road.
Yes, it is. It's got to be way up there.
Wicked old county road. I'll just take the motion.
Motion to approve.
Certify it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we can go, we can go, you're done.
What's that?
You're done now, guys. You can go once again.
Yeah, now those are two lots.
I hope so.
Kathy, two hundred bucks, two lots.
You just want the MyLab, though, right?
That's all.
You'll take the MyLab.
Oh, actually Kathy was looking for this one.
Okay. Is that? All done?
All done.
What's that? 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 What's that?
Oh, actually Kathy was looking for this one.
Okay. Is that? All done?
All done.
What's that? 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 What's that?
You know, in California, they charge developers a lot more money than do other...
Other towns, they charge a lot more money.
They sure do.
In Massachusetts.
Yeah? Is that right?
Yes.
Because I think our fees should be raised, but, good heavens, that would be an unpopular comment.
I don't know what they charge, just to perk a lot in some towns, even Middleborough, just to do a perk test on a lot, $4.50.
How much?
How much?
$450 bucks.
Really?
Just for the...
And you have to go all the way?
Yeah, basically.
They just collect the check.
Yeah, you had to correct me after talking about the marijuana thing. You should see all the problems, you should wear all the problems that Wareham has with their selling facility. They have to bust people in.
Well, see, that's what I wanted.
That's come to an end.
What?
I heard that that's, that they, well, they, they still have it in place, but that the activities died down so much that they haven't had...
They're busting them up there and...
You have to make an appointment, and you get bust from a parking spot and so forth, but it's just, I heard the...
I think they restricted the...
Well, you see, that's what we were saying when we were to be the permit granting authority, and I got some information that, you know, other people are a little bit more lenient on what the requirements will need to be for the facilities. And... It's that? Because we, you know, you know, I don't, you know, it affects me when people come to me and say, "Why did you let that happen in town?" You know what I mean? And...
You have no control.
I do have control over what I have control over.
Yes, but it...
You know? And I've been saying since day one, they should have, if they do go to, and they're going to go to recreational marijuana distribution, you know, that they should have them bust in, and they should have that appointment, so you don't have 40,000 people driving down the road. Because when we went to the public hearing in here, on whether we should even allow it or not, there were people that were up in arms about it, you know?
Yeah.
And we wanted to zone, you know, give the town the opportunity to zone it out, and we were overridden.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
All right.
It's been enjoyable.
Always is, isn't it?
Just don't schedule me when you have another one of these.
Sorry.
You're just filling in, though, right?
Huh?
You don't usually do this, right?
No, I very rarely do.
Nice to see you, though.
Yeah. Everybody's got something to do tonight, so they said, "I gotta go."
To make the... So, you know you're not...
Got to keep paying the dues.
Huh?
Got to keep paying the dues.
Yeah. I paid them too long time ago.
Yeah, I know.
Are you on ZBIA?
No.
You're just on Zebra, are you?
Correct.
Okay. Because Janice used to be on ZBIA.
She still is.
You're on Master Plan.
Yeah. Do you want to do it?
Can't do any more right now.
These are all done?
Okay.
Oh, nope.
I sort of, I enjoy it, because there's a lot of...
Listen.
I know a lot more about this town than...
They went this way.
I love Master Plan.
I know a lot of stuff.
Good to see you.
I'll come to one of yours.
Yeah, it's fun.
When I did it 20 years ago, it was my favorite thing. It was great. So, this is a board of appeals petition. I make a motion that we forward with no comment, as we always do.
Somebody can second that?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes for December? 27th?
Trying to find them.
Was it still someone with a crooked lane?
What?
The crooked lane one.
Only got four, though.
There's only four. This is really long, I haven't read these.
I read them online now.
Oh, look.
Brian, motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 27th and January 10th.
Okay.
You read them all?
Mm-hmm. Someone wants to second that?
I'll second it.
They're looking for one more crooked lane.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Awesome.
I'm going to go insane, just because it wasn't on the board at that point.
Certainly. That's a good call.
Nope. Yes.
It still counts as an I, though.
Sure does.
I was trying to defeat it.
I know, I know. It's like a zinc again.
Okay, old business. Board of Selectmen letter.
Are you looking at those solar panels?
Well, I don't know. I mean...
Just for your information, that letter was sent to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
What I really like to do is this not be an A and R.
Which we had to do.
Yeah.
We had to do it. And we've done it years past, and it doesn't mean that we're going to get any $8,000 expenditure.
No.
And there also, when I was, I had a conversation with Nate, where he asked what resources might be available, what service. I won't know. I guess I could send an email to see what kind of resources are available, but if there are some less expensive options, we would like some help.
Did, do you want to, does everyone have a copy of the January 10th minutes, and did they want to vote on them?
I think we did.
Did it be 10th or just the 27th? Oh, okay. My bad.
Discuss membership in American Planning Association?
Actually, it's the Modified Site Plan, is that?
Is the next one? Oh, business. Why am I not on this poll? Oh, because we added this in, I'm sorry.
They just widen the entrance.
They want to, yes. That's going to, they're going to have to go to Mass Highway for that, because Mass Highway controls the curb cuts on the road. And this is something that the fire department wanted, because the width...
It sits right now, I recall, and I read the, his notes in the letter that came with this.
Yep.
But it was for emergency exits.
Right.
Major exit in case of emergency.
What was the width of the first driveway? 22 feet?
I think it was 26, 24.
24.
I think it was pretty standard.
Yeah, existing conditions planned. Yeah? It's the old driveway. It's the new driveway. It's almost double width, you know?
I know where my letter is.
It's awesome. I got a call from, I got a call from the deputy chief today, and the Selectmen wanted him to come in, and I said that he didn't have to come in, you know? Because he's working during the day today, and I don't think he would, you know? He's probably getting up early and...
We need him well rested.
Yep, absolutely. And I said that he didn't have to worry about it, and we'd take care of it. But I, I think we have to, I agree with it. Now, is this our only site plan review on this, this project?
Are you talking about the hospital or this particular lot?
This lot.
This lot. This, this lot is not under the, is done under the underlying zoning.
Yeah.
And it's the only site plan we're doing this lot, but it has nothing to do with the mixed use development overlay.
Right. Typically, engineers come in for site plan review, whether it's underlying, overlying...
Well, this is the one we did...
We already did this.
We already did this.
Well, we didn't sign it. We passed it pending...
Right.
The engineer's discussion with the fire chief, which generated this amendment.
So, that plan should have those modifications on it.
Brian, I don't have any, where the fire chief made a, sent this letter saying that these changes are, he's in agreeance with.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem making a motion to sign this tonight.
I'll second that. I absolutely agree.
Excellent. Having a motion in a second, I'd like to call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we don't have a MyLab on these, we're just going to sign the...
No, it's just the plan.
Yes. And it's a very nice set of plans.
Yes, it is. Um, and this is something that the, um, the fire department wanted because, um-
And it sits right now, I recall, and I read the, the, his notes in the letter that came with this.
Yep.
But, uh, it was for emergency exits.
Right.
In, uh, a major exit in case of emergency.
What was the width of the first driveway, twenty-two feet?
I think it was twenty-six, or twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
I think it was pretty standard.
Yeah, existing conditions plan. Yeah? It's the old driveway. It's the new driveway. It's almost double width, you know?
Oh, I know where that letter is.
It's awesome. Um, I got a call from, I got a call from the deputy chief today. And, uh, the selectman wanted him to come in. And I said that he didn't have to come in. You know? Because he was working during the day today and I don't think he would, you know? No, he's probably, probably getting up early and-
We need him well rested.
Yep, absolutely. And, uh, I said that he didn't have to worry about it and that we'd take care of it. But I, I think we have to, I agree with it. Now, is this our only site plan review on this, this project?
Are you talking about the hospital or this particular lot?
This lot.
This, this lot is not under the, uh, is done under the underlying zoning.
Yeah.
And it's the only, uh, site plan we'll do on this lot. Uh, but it has nothing to do with the mixed-use development overlay.
Right. Typically, engineers come in for site plan review, whether it's underlying, overlying.
Yes. Well, this is the one we did-
We already did this.
We already did this.
Well, we didn't sign it. We passed it pending-
Right.
The engineer's discussion with the fire chief.
So that plan should have those modifications on it.
Uh, Brian, I don't have any, um, where the fire chief made a, sent this letter saying, uh, that these changes are, he's in agreeance with.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem making a motion to sign this tonight.
I'll second that. I absolutely agree.
Excellent. Having a motion in a second, I'd like to, um, call the vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we don't have a mile hour on these, we're just gonna sign them back?
No, it's just the plan.
The world hall?
Uh-huh.
Yes. And it's a very nice set of plans.
Yes, it is.
But I don't understand why they would have been burdened with a set of this.
I, I went through all the street, the roads back there because I'm retired. And all the roads in the hospital. And I don't think, uh, I don't think the roads that are there are going to affect any plans for the redeveloping the rest of the thing.
Only the cover page is the most-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not attached to, particularly to anything. They're all very narrow.
It's hard to find, yeah.
And there's no drainage system.
Yep.
There's no drainage system. So you'd have to dig it up just to put the pipes in.
Yep.
So.
So we're gonna have the whole, whole thing brought to us at?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This, it's just-
The last one. I think we still need-
We need to sign this one?
It would be nice to visit-
Only the top page?
His site, but it's not to look at the roads.
Like ten pages.
Only one copy though.
No, all of them.
You're joking.
I'm not.
Every page, every copy.
Um-
I think you can sell the curb.
What's that?
I think you can sell the curb.
Sell what?
Sell the curbs.
Here, start signing, thank you.
I think that nice.
I just think, yeah.
Every page, every copy.
What? No, 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 I don't think we have to sign every copy. We have to sign one for them to bring to the, are they, they're gonna get all these back?
No, she's just, was gonna take the one back. I mean, I can ask her, she can copy it.
So we want to sign?
No, we can sign every one on the ones she takes back. On the ones that the town keeps, we're just gonna sign the top copy.
Okay. No, all of them's a one.
All of them on the front.
Okay.
I'll let you data because I'm not gonna screw it up again.
So we're gonna sign every page on one of them?
Yes, on that one you're doing now. You started a-
They started moving the signatures on some.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. S F and G does that. They put a word, it's good for them. It's funny, Senna, Fitzgerald, and Gilbert, they all used to work for, um, Brian Howard. Remember Brad?
That's S E A.
S E A?
Is that French?
That's Sylvia that came in.
That's Sylvia? Oh, okay.
But I knew, uh, Bill Senna. Bill Senna pretty well.
I thought it was S F and G when I looked at it. S E A guy. This guy's over in, um, North Carolina, right?
Did you find the other copy?
I did, I hit that with him.
Did you sign this one twice?
Whoops. That's why there's not enough spots now.
That's all right.
He was down to Barbara.
You got it.
Do you want to fill the water? I want your flame to break. Where's your water?
Did you sign, did you sign, one of them's assigned twice. We will, we will say who the guilty burden is. Yeah, we need to have Brian, who's, Brian has to sign that one.
Can I ask Kathy a question?
Are you sure I did?
While you're folding them.
You did it, signed it twice.
Have you heard from Brian, uh, Rome Barber?
Uh, yes.
How's that situation?
He did bring in, um, some pictures and different things that he had done to answer to the requests that had been made of him. And I gave it to Rita and she had given it to Franklin and I guess he was going to-
Franklin, okay, okay.
Contact the engineer and-
Okay. He was gonna contact?
Because I think it had to be re-inspected, so-
That's a good question then, because TikTok, you know?
Yeah.
So I can check with her again tomorrow.
He already had a, he already had a penalty, a time penalty.
Which one is this, which subdivision?
The what?
It's a subdivision acceptance?
Yes.
Yeah, that's really important.
The road acceptance.
We need that for town meeting, right?
For a very, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Good thing that's all in there.
Twice the approval. You only want to need three, right?
Yeah.
I, I have a list of all those that I keep up. But it didn't have a way of, you know, like getting them into the system.
Looks like they've had a lot of water problems that follow shows from those minutes meeting.
Yep.
Over the years.
Suppose I gave it to the wrong person.
That's before the subdivision went in.
I would have shut it down.
I have issues.
One of those issues.
What?
So I just use them myself.
Same, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm up to.
Right. You know, along with the quest for anyway and stuff like that, other ones that people haven't paved a second.
Can I sign next to one of yours, Peter?
Yeah.
And my, my street is way worse as far as puddles. There are plenty of streets. There are a lot of streets in Lakeville. What?
That's why I talk about the culverts all the time. I'm worried about it. Because we have more water, with more climate change, we're gonna have more water.
Well, this is, we, we made a step in the right direction today with the, the, the forty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Underfoot, we're gonna, those other site plans are mostly going to be for getting the water not into the street.
It's crucial.
That, that issue alone, there's, on School Street, it's a terrible example.
Did you see that? Has he fixed treatment? Or do they have to be done during field reading?
No, we can finish up. We're almost done.
I, yeah, we're, we're almost done with this.
So Kathy must add this one in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any other business, Mr. Chair?
Um, I think we got this right here.
Did you suggest this or was this Kathy? Adding, getting a membership for this?
Kathy, it's Kathy.
Kathy, um, I've just been trying to do some research because the longer I work for this board, the more confusing and complex it's getting. So I had checked with someone who does all the administrative for Concom and there's like a Concom organization. So I assumed there has to be one for planning. So this is the one that I found. Um, I think it would be great to give you a lot of resources and information. I mean, I just copied up the website. If you wanted to go take a look at it and see if you think it would be something that would be helpful. And you can join it individually or as a board.
There is a tremendous amount of resources. I think, Zink, you had, you had turned us on to, uh, at least you told me about it when I first came on. And for, um, with the common law, where people would, would have discussions and so forth. Does Kathy have that? Access to that?
Uh, yes, some, uh, some of, some of them, yeah. The, I'm, I'm at the plant, the CPTC. Yeah.
You can go on and ask a question.
There's, there's one more that happens the first week in June up in Fort Devens, which is just a housing one where, uh, you know, trap us up there.
Someone should go to that.
That's a, um-
We need to, this is, the governor's gonna change some stuff. We've got, we've really got to pay attention to that. That's gonna be a big deal.
What's he changing?
The housing, getting into more affordable housing. We're gonna, you're gonna blow by it. You don't, it's, it's a big deal.
I know it's a big deal.
High density.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and, yeah. So when was that? Zink, you said it was at Fort Devens?
The first week in June. I just, I just got the notice.
Are you signed up to go?
No. No, it's, it's, well-
I would be interested in going, but I really don't want to go by myself.
It's a stayover.
You have to stay over?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a two-day thing.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, but the first day is the important day.
Is it during the week?
No.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. I think it might be, yeah. I don't know.
I think it-
Because I have a job to go to.
Yeah, right. No, there, there was, the last one I went to, I went there for a particular program being put on by a particular person and it was very, very valuable. But I don't see the same one up again, where it was, uh, if you wanted to do your own, uh, forty B as a town, how you, how you do the budgeting for it, uh, and, and how you price the thing out. And I, I thought that was real neat, but I don't think Lakeville's going to do that.
A town-owned forty B?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just like a town, town-owned, um, over fifty-five.
And you leased it and rent them?
Authority.
Either.
Either one would be, yeah, that's, either one would be a housing authority, right?
It's absolutely housing authority, yeah. You'd have to have it, yeah.
You would need a board and people that-
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it would be a whole, it would be a whole sea change for us here in Lakeville.
Yeah, we don't have, uh-
Yeah. It would be a, yeah.
Well, shall I have to bring in some recent articles from the Governor Baker's, things he's talking about, things that they've been sharing with us at Serpide, which are very clearly, they're, um, actually, I don't even know if Serpide's where I got the last one.
Gonna be very clearly burdensome.
They're gonna cheat, they're gonna override zoning to get the affordable housing in because they need it in.
That's what forty B is. It's overriding.
Yeah, but this is gonna be-
They keep trying.
Higher density.
They keep trying again and again to get one in and it hasn't, it hasn't been voted yet. But they, they hate this idea of a two-thirds zoning, a, a two-thirds town meeting vote to have zoning changes.
Oh, they want to blow them through.
They, they want to have, they want to have plain, I think, so-
Oh, no, they want to, what do you call it, streamline?
That's streamlined, yes. Well, it'll, it'll go a lot faster if-
Like Greaser or Goose.
It's a very complicated issue with more housing. We just do. We need more housing.
But they've been doing that now over the years.
We don't need more.
And it's not really new anymore.
More people, that means more-
They're here anyway.
Traffic, that means they're in other places, they're not here.
Do we need a motion for this or do we have something to announce?
Nope. I think we're all set. Kathy, thank you very much for this.
Do we want to subscribe or do you, did you have a cost for this?
Cost is on the back page.
Like I said, that's by your choice. If you think it would be worth it, I feel for myself. I would definitely want, want it to try to educate myself.
You would, so you feel that you would benefit from this?
I definitely think I would.
Would anybody else feel it would benefit from this? Would you want to look into it further?
I, I would like to read it when it comes.
Okay.
When it, I, I, I support it completely.
I mean, is it something that we just get emails or is it something we have to go to a class on the other side of the road?
I think it's like a publication.
I think conservation also doesn't have a budget, but we're all members of MACC.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So I don't know if we could all become members of this with this, you know, we don't have a budget, but mysteriously the money could become appointed.
Like agency fees that we could use for this year.
Right.
But then like you're tracking your expenses now, so then next year you might want to put it into-
It's an actual part of a budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't think we need to pony up out of our own pockets.
No, no.
Can you sign this up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. You two, you and us, five?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. That way you have, you have a source.
Do you need us to fill out the back page?
Um-
So you have, it looks like it's mailing address, not email. Can we get it by email?
That's why we have to all have it.
You know what, I'll-
Well, there is, there is the one with the asterisk. Email's the one.
So you just name, you need, name an email so you have that.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Electron and do it.
Yeah, it's just a little thing. Email's the only thing required.
Am I too cheap to suggest we get one? Oh, it is? Okay.
If it's email, it's just- And, uh, would you entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair?
Most certainly would.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Did it even get seconded?
I had to get matched before he said we were-